Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. Prior to our meeting, I would like to invite Judge Todd Platts to come forward and administer an oath of office for our newly re-elected supervisor, Charles Worster.
If you ask me, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And the Constitution of this common law.
And I will discharge the duties of office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
Lift it up.
Lift it up.
Likewise, thank you. All right, now I'd like to call this organizational meeting to order, and I would like everyone to join me in a pledge to the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would like to open up the floor to any public comment before we get started. And if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to address the board, please click the raise hand button to be recognized. All right, seeing none, we will move on to election of officers. First up is chairman position.
To nominate Mark Swamley for chairman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to nominate George Devoreak as vice chairman.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have Assistant Secretary Treasurer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to elect Charles Worster, Assistant Secretary Treasurer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have appointment of board delegates. So this would be voting delegates to the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors Annual Convention. Currently, all board members are delegates, and the voting delegate is Charles Worster.
It would be my honor to continue in that service.
Before he changes his mind, I'd like to nominate all board members as delegates, and Charles Worster is the voting delegate.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Resolution 2024-01, Appointment of Township Solicitor. Currently, MPL Law Firm LLP, Charles A. Roush Esquire. Proposed is still MPL Law Firm LLP, James R. Sanders Esquire.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-01, appointing MPL and James R. Sanders as solicitors.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-02, Appointment of Personnel/Labor Council. Currently Campbell Durant PC with Patrick J. Harvey Esquire.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2024-02, Appointment of Personnel/Labor Council, Campbell Durant PC. As law firm, Patrick J. Harvey Esquire is attorney.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-03, Appointment of Civil Engineer.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-03, naming First Capital Engineering, John Luciani PE. Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-04, Appointment of Environmental Engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2024-04, Appointment of Environmental Engineer, Bukor Horn as firm, Diana Young PE as engineer.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-05, Appointment of Township Secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I could move for the adoption. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-05, appointing. Wait a second, which one are we on?
Township Secretary Dory Bouders.
Oh, well, I guess she's okay. I move for the adoption of 2024-05, appointing Dory Bouders as Township Secretary.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-06, Appointment of Township Treasurer, Teresa Hummel.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-06, appointing Terry Hummel as Township Treasurer.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-07, Appointment of Vacancy Board Chair, Jeffrey Lobach Esquire.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-07, appointing as vacancy board chair, Jeffrey Lobach Esquire.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-08, Appointment of Non-Uniformed Employee Pension Fund Chief Administrative Officer, Mark Hodgkinson.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of Resolution 2024-08, Appointment of Non-Uniformed Employee Pension Fund Chief Administrative Officer, Mark Hodgkinson.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution 2024-09, Appointment of Police Pension Fund Chief Administrative Officer, Mark Hodgkinson.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-09, appointing Mark Hodgkinson as the chief administrative officer of the police pension fund.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-10, Appointment of Sewage Enforcement Officer and Alternate.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-10, naming South Penn Code Consultants LLC as the sewage enforcement officer, and John Luciani PE as the alternate.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-11, Appointment of Representative and Alternate to the York Adams Tax Bureau.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2024-11, Appointment of a Representative and Alternate to the York Adams Tax Bureau. Recommend Teresa Hummel as our representative and Sandra Ratcliffe as our alternate.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-12, Appointment of Representative to Springersbury Township Volunteer Fire Company.
Good for another year?
Absolutely.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-12, naming Robert Cox as our representative to Springersbury Township Volunteer Fire Company.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-13, Appointment of Representative and Citizen at Large to Serve on York Area United Fire and Rescue Commission, two-year terms.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2024-13, Appointment of Representative and Citizen at Large to Serve on York Area United Fire and Rescue Commission. The current representative, I nominate Don Bishop, and the citizen at large, I nominate Mark Swamley.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think that means that we also now have to nominate a, um, an alternate. Because that term is not up. Is that by resolution? What's the next one in line? Okay, Resolution 2024-26 would be appointment of alternate, um, member to serve on Yalfer. Wait, I'm lost where I am. Okay, there we are. Replacing.
Me.
Yes, replacing Don. Don was alternate. He is now representative and Charles, you want to be alternate?
I'm willing to do the alternate on an occasion.
Which occasion would that be?
Once a month, right?
Not once a month. Whenever the appointed delegates cannot make.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now back to where we were. That was, okay, so we're at Resolution 2024-14, is that correct, Dory?
Yes.
Appointment of Representatives to Serve on Local Government Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend nominating or appointing Randall Hileman. Randall has been attending the meetings since Tim Holmes resigned, and I spoke to him, and he's willing to continue.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-14, appointing Randall Hileman as our, Hileman, I'm sorry, as our representative to serve on the local government advisory committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-15, Appointment of Members to Serve on the Planning Commission, four-year terms, Tim Staub and Charles Stir.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 2024-15, Appointment of Members to Serve on the Planning Commission for a four-year term, Timothy Staub and Charles Stir.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-16, Appointment of Member and Alternate Member to Serve on a Zoning Hearing Board. These are five-year terms for regular member and three-year term for alternate.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption Resolution Number 2024-16, Appointment of Member and Alternate Member to Serve on the Zoning Hearing Board. The members to be appointed are Mark Baer and Brian Kaufman. Mark Baer is member, Brian Kaufman is alternate.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2014-17, Appointment of Member to Serve on the Parks and Recreation Board, four-year term.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution Number 2024-17, Appointment of a Member to Serve on the Parks and Recreation Board, Stephen Wolf.
Did I read this as it was stated or as it was intended? Resolution 2014-17.
I thought you read.
I think I said 2024.
I know I said 2024-17.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-18, Appointment of Members to Serve on Historic Preservation Committee. This is an annual reappointment for the members listed.
I have a question on this that may or may not be, this may or may not be the appropriate time to bring it up. But at some point in the last two months, we received a letter for an attorney for a developer in our community who had some rather uncomplimentary things to say about two people that are on our various boards. And I guess my question is, has, have we investigated that? And do we have any kind of idea where that stands? And I'm not sure who would be able to answer that.
I did speak to one of the people that was mentioned in that letter and got his side of the story, which was slightly different than what the letter stated. But I didn't take it any further than that.
I think it was conveyed to me that that person was going to recuse himself from votes on that particular development. Is that correct?
He did not mention that to me. But I did talk to Solicitor Roush then after my conversation, and the solicitor was like, it's totally up to that person.
It is up to that person. It's not a requirement, but my understanding was that he has agreed to do that.
Okay.
It's relatively inconsequential, I assume, to this resolution. But this is our one opportunity to have an impact on the people that we appoint to various things, and thought it was at least worth bringing up.
I guess as far as this particular resolution goes, I would expect that if a member of the Historic Preservation Committee had a problem with the development and voiced an opinion about it, that the developer may not like that opinion. Can we take a vote on this one? I don't know that we have.
No, no, we didn't do anything.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2024-18, Appointment of Members to Serve on the Historic Preservation Committee. The following individuals, Lois Miller, Lee Davis, Stephen Smith, Kevin Eck, Robert Fry Jr., David Helzl, Carol Tanzola, and Daniel Falk.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-19, designation of zoning officer and deputy zoning officer. Proposed. Let's see.
And who is Benjamin McHugh?
He's the new employee that we hired to replace him. My recommendation is to appoint John Luciani as the zoning officer and Benjamin McHugh as the deputy. And then sometime here in the next several months, we'll probably, I will present to the board to switch that. But for now, John Luciani as the zoning officer, Ben McHugh as the deputy is my recommendation.
I hear a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for adoption of Resolution Number 2024-19, Designation of Zoning Officer and Deputy Zoning Officer. The zoning officer, John Luciani, and the deputy Benjamin McHugh.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-20, Appointment of Building Official and Deputy Building Official. Ray Markey Jr. is building official and firm of First Capital Engineering as deputy.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-20, Appointing Building Official and Deputy Building Official. Ray Markey is building official and First Capital Engineering as the deputy.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-21, Establishment of Treasurer Bond in the Amount of $3 Million.
I'll move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-21, Establishing the Treasurer Bond at $3 Million.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2024-22, Approval of Bank Account Signatories.
Move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-22, Approval of Bank Account Signatories.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dory, I abstain citing my role as an officer at one of the depositories.
Resolution 2024-24, Setting the 2024 Salary for the Township Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-24, Setting the 2024 Salary for the Township Manager.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution Number 2024-25, Appointment of Smith Elliott Kearns &amp; Company LLC to Audit Township Funds for the years ending December 31, 2023, and December 31, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of Resolution 2024-25, Appointment of Smith Elliott Kearns &amp; Company LLC to Audit Township Funds for the years ending December 31, 2023, and December 31, 2024, December 31, 2023, and December 31, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, did we do W?
I had the same question. We, it seemed like we.
We did the approval of the bank account.
Signatories. Oh, I thought we did depositories too, I'm sorry. Resolution 2024-23, Designation of Depositories.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-23, Designation of Depositories.
Second.
Motion and a second.
One I should have stayed. It always gets me.
That's what threw me, that's what threw me because I thought.
Sure.
I don't want to be caught voting for something I shouldn't. That's, yeah. All right, so yes, we can be authorized to sign it. I cannot be authorized as a depositor.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Charles has abstained, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to abstain and vote for adoption of 2022, or 2024-22?
Yes, I want to vote in favor of that.
From the depository.
Designation of depositories.
All right, so we have one other item. William Shank won a write-in for the elected auditor position. He happened to be out at town at the time that, um, the signature was required back to accept that position. He did respond by email that, um, that he would like to fulfill that position. It is up to the board to decide if we would accept that, um, email as acceptance.
Is he going to be in the country tomorrow when they have their meeting, their big meeting?
So let me get this straight. He won the write-in, but, but was not able to confirm his interest in serving in a timely manner because he was out of the country.
Correct.
All right, so then what does that create?
If I had a nickel for every time.
It creates the situation where the board gets to decide if they will accept the late acceptance. And I would suggest that that's probably the correct thing to do.
So then we communicate that back to the county elections office?
Yes. He'll, he will complete his paperwork once he's able to, but since the deadline has passed, the, um, Office of Elections suggested that the board, this board.
Agreed.
Agree that him submitting his paperwork past the deadline is okay with this board.
But we can't, we still can't certify, right? As duly.
The election board will certify him. We're just telling them that we're okay with that.
I'm more than fine with the candidate. Just wanted, just wanted to understand the process.
So do I have a motion?
I move that we do whatever we have to do to make it happen that William Shank.
Second.
Is our auditor.
I like that motion.
Got that? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned and on to the next. All right, this is the Police Pension Board Meeting. I will first open the floor to public comment. And if Charlie Store wants to say anything, he has to click raise hand button. I guess not. Okay, so appointment of township supervisors as members.
Move for the appointment of making all the board members, uh, members of the police pension board.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment of Police Officers as Representatives.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Detective Tessa Miller and Corporal Alex Shrift as the Police Officer Representatives.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Appointment of Officers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval of the current chairman, Mark Swamley, the current vice chairman, George Devoreak, and the current secretary, Charles Worster.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. All right, now I call to order the Development Authority Reorganization Meeting. Again, public comment. If there's anyone in the audience or anyone on Zoom, please click the raise hand button on Zoom or raise your hand in the audience if you'd like to address the board. All right, on to Appointment of Officers.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the appointment of Mark Swamley Chairman, George Devorek Vice Chairman, and Charles Worster Secretary Treasurer.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appointment of Additional Personnel, Chief Administrative Officer, Mark Hodgkinson. Should we take this in a block? Financial Officer Teresa Hummel, Recording Secretary Dory Bouders, Solicitor James R. Sanders, MPL Law Firm LLP, and Engineer John Luciani PE, First Capital Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the appointment of additional personnel to the Development Authority. Chief Administrative Officer Mark Hodgkinson, Financial Officer Teresa Hummel, Recording Secretary Dory Bouders, Solicitor James R. Sanders, MPL Law Firm, and John Luciani at First Capital Engineering as the engineer. and John Luciani of First Capital Engineering as the engineer.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. And I think that does it.